For the review and the extension of the ambulance contract with Action and prior to and during the January 25 Committee meeting, the BOS advised that the committee's responsibility regarding the extension was limited only to a recommendation whether to extend or not. Further, it suggested the committee could not get into the financial of the contract. The actual extension and contract value would be handled by BOS. Ambulance Committee met on January 25, 23, 25, 2023, and voted four to one to extend the ambulance contract. Now, the committee has been asked to review language for an amendment to the contract extension. Tonight's meeting is to review the amendments' suggestions received from Craig Rivas, BOS member, on February 14. The committee can provide recommendations and express opinions but cannot bind the town. Please be reminded that this is a contract extension for a contract expiring June 30, 2023. It's not a negotiation for a new contract and changes might impact pricing. So, let's just level set where we are right now. It's stated by the-
Can I, just something, because you said earlier and I just wanted to correct it. We voted to recommend or to selectmen the extension we didn't vote to extend.
Right. We voted for a recommendation. So, our responsibility is limited only to a recommendation.
Okay. And we voted-
And we voted four to one to, well, to recommend to extend the ambulance contract.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just asking that.
So, I just want to make sure that as we get into this each and other-
Well, I'm following you. I'm listening carefully and following you. I just want to make that connection.
Okay. So, this is a contract extension for a contract expiring June 30. It's not a negotiation for a new contract and changes can have impact to pricing. So, to level set where we are before we get into the suggestion, it's stated by the BOS Chair at the last meeting on February 13, it's the intent of the BOS to extend the contract, and you can see the video recording at 27 dot ten, twenty-seven minutes in, ten seconds. The suggestions made by Selectmen Rivas are his opinions only. They're not recommendations of the board for a review by our committee. The BOS has not voted on or agreed on any of them. We're looking at Craig's email and the request for consideration that was sent on the 14th. Adding use of the fire department ambulance as backup in the contract is far beyond the scope of the ambulance oversight committee and this exercise, and therefore, we can't consider it. We can certainly, I guess we can discuss it if it comes up, but at least at the onset, that's, I thought we were limited to not discuss that. It's solely the responsibility of the board of selectmen, which is not discussed or considered, the many contract regulatory and cost issues surrounding implementation, and if, if and only if that were the board's decision regarding future direction. So, getting now to Craig's suggestions, section.
Do you want to say something?
Sure.
Okay. Since it was stated at the last selectmen's meeting that this block, you're going to extend the contract, these are just personal recommendations. I, I move, I don't even want to waste time going over them. They're absolutely ridiculous. They're somebody's opinion, and they're unreasonable, and they're the dumbest things I've ever, ever heard. Obviously, he knows nothing, Craig, sorry, no offense, but about how any of this works, about training, these are unreasonable. Putting in the fire department ambulance that's 32 years old as a backup and taking away from runs made by Action, which would decrease any chance of getting any of our money back in the rebate. I mean, it's just ridiculous. This is the dumbest thing I've ever heard. It is a personal agenda by two of the selectmen to get the fire department to run the ambulance full-time, again, which is the dumbest thing I have ever heard personally. You're talking about the taxpayer paying millions and millions of dollars for a service that will not even be equal or better than a professional service that we have for a minimal amount of money with a chance to get money back. The whole thing is ridiculous. I move we end discussion right now, and they've already said they're going to sign the contract, and you guys want to pursue it more, you'll have a fight on your hands because all the taxpayers that I have spoken to, which are many, are really upset. This whole thing is absolutely ridiculous. It's the same fight that we've been having for four, five years when you first started. Any other bids that came in were 750, a million dollars. Action provides an outstanding service. The residents are absolutely happy with it. It more than meets the needs and takes care of the needs of the town. And honestly, it's starting to be an ethical question about why this is being pushed so hard, and it's upsetting to me and a lot of people. So, that's what I vote. I don't even think it's worth discussing. I read part of it, and I didn't even bother reading. It was just a waste of time. So, that's my say.
Thank you. Do we have a second to Robin's motion?
No.
No?
No.
Okay. All right, thanks. I do think that we should look through the administrative things to just-
That's fine.
You know, at least see where we are.
Five million, you ask the taxpayer, you want five million dollars or you want to pay 330 to get some money back?
But you preface this with, it's not in our purview to discuss tonight the possibility of a fire department ambulance. It's not what we were told, we were asked to do that discussion.
I have been, we have discussed a lot of things, and I just let it go.
You said, you said we were not attached to that tonight, so I would say that whole thing, I appreciate your, your input and your passion on this, but it's, I don't think it's something that we discussed tonight, and that's why I didn't second it. I think we do need to discuss the remainder of this.
But these are, these are somebody's personal opinion, that the board has already made a decision. Well, I think that-
Let me, let me counter that also. The board, at the last meeting, one member of the board, Donald Allen Fork, made a motion to extend the contract with Action Ambulance. That was not seconded. There has not been a decision. The decision was to ask the committee to come back and review the language of the contract, that everything was, could be put on the table with regard to the language of the contract, and that doesn't include, the contract does not include the potential for fire department ambulance. So, I agree with you. The fire department ambulance is not part of tonight's discussion, but the rest of the contract is-
Well, it is part of the suggestion, so.
Let me finish. You preface this, Donna, with the fact that having this discussion with impact pricing or cutting back pricing. We have a contractual agreement with Action Ambulance that we can choose to extend a contract. They have given us numbers for that. What is on the table tonight is discussions, if, if Action chooses to change the pricing based on the discussions-
Right.
Then we can just reject it and go back to what we already have. We are not, not, it would be the selectmen would do that discussion. We're just making recommendations, but the selectmen say, okay, we'll just go back to the original language of the contract and we'll change nothing. They, they still have that option. So, let's not play these kind of word games about what's going to happen if we have any discussion at all about the content of the contract.
Well, the, the point that you're making is that we've been asked to look at this, but it's out of our purview. So, if it's out of our purview, why should we even entertain discussion, right?
It's not part of, it's not part of our purview within the contract that exists with Action Ambulance, correct?
Exactly.
But we've been asked by the board of selectmen as a nominated, as a nominated committee to make recommendations on the language of the contract, and then the board of selectmen would have that discussion with Action Ambulance. And I certainly would, I certainly would welcome the Action Ambulance's input tonight as we have discussions, but there are elements of what has been discussed at the selectmen's meeting and elements that, in what Craig suggested, exclusive of the fire department ambulance, that I think are deserving of discussion.
And I agree with you.
Okay.
And I, that's what I said. I think we can go through and discuss the administrative things and things like that, but in terms of, you know, deploying a Haddon ambulance as backup, I think that's a bigger, broader discussion with lots of cost implications, safety implications, and everything else. So, when we get that far, we can discuss that.
I don't intend to stress that tight. That's, that's a totally different discussion.
It's on the list.
It's on the list.
It's not, it's not on the list. It was suggestions given to us by one of the members of board of selectmen. So, if we, if we just say, you know, that that's not part of tonight's discussion, that part of it's over.
Well, that's what I'm saying. So, let's move on.
So, let's agree that we're not going to discuss the police, the, the fire department-
Why isn't the contract here that actually has contact that we need to discuss?
Well, let's just, why don't we just start at the top and take these one by one and see where we go?
How far?
Because we can go in a circle all night long, and we really need to move forward. Okay. Scope one. Fire chief listed as primary designee where police chief is listed. The police chief should be listed as the alternate, amended throughout the document. The fire chief is part-time, 20 hours a week, and is employed out of town. The police chief is the emergency management director and responsible for public safety. Police chief is full-time, full-time, available 24 hours a day, and responsibilities include like coordination of police-fire EMS, public works, response to disasters, regularly meet and discuss any pending and projected emergency issues in town, state holders, and et cetera, et cetera. Therefore, it's my opinion anyway, that Action EMS contract for operational responsibilities should remain with the police chief. I second. I agree.
There was quotations of Donna, like, this is the first I've seen of this stuff I know here watching the meeting. This is the first I've seen of the email that you sent. Unfortunately, I was working all day long, and this is dated 10:42 this morning, 11:42 this morning. It brings up points with regard to the police in terms of the police chief would be staging the ambulance during public events because there's a safety officer. There's other things in here where it brings up that the police chief is the proper authority. But the, I believe that there are areas in here where the fire chief-
Yes.
And public, they're involved in, in, in emergency response as well. There are areas where the fire chief would be the better designated.
I disagree. I disagree wholeheartedly. Our police chief is full-time, he is in town, he has 24-hour responsibilities, and I believe that he should have continued oversight of this, and if any changes should be made with regard to police chief. There's one instance in the current contract where it mentions a fire chief, and I think if we're going to pursue an amendment, that that should be changed and updated, whatever, to fire chief, I mean, to his chief. I agree. He is the emergency management director, so it's his full responsibility. Right. As part of his contract, that's his role.
Emergency management is different than first response. And firefighters, our firefighters, our firefighters-
Police have been first response, and they're usually first at the scene, and it's been that way. It's my understanding that it's been that way for a good, long time. And unless there's, you know, real reason to switch, which I've yet to see, it's my opinion that this contract and the extension thereof stay with the police chief.
Then I would amend your motion to say that if we do that, that the police chief has to take on the full responsibility that is in this contract, and nobody's taken on the responsibility of reviewing the 10 minutes and greater and making a recommendation as to whether or not that was a, you know, unforeseen circumstances, whether it was something that prevented me from doing it, or if it was something that should be subject to a penalty that's in the contract. So, I would say that if we give all that responsibility to the police chief, if we're recommending that, and let's make sure we just say we're recommending that, then we also recommend that the police chief carry through with all the duties that are enumerated in the contract.
I can agree with that.
Just to clarify, the contract says that a report of taking more than 10 minutes should be reviewed, and that a determination should be made as to whether or not the extra time or the additional time was caused by traffic or by weather. And after that, if in fact those are not the causes, then there's an option to impose a penalty.
That's correct. And as far, as far as I know, there's never been a review of any one of those where there was a recommendation to not take action or take action, or to impose one. And I'm saying the contract says each one of those is an incident that needs to be reviewed, and then if it's the police chief's responsibility, then we should expect that the police chief-
And we are getting the reports. I think what you're saying there is that we haven't had the reviews-
There's, there's no action taken on it.
Locally.
There's no, there's no action being taken.
That we should see to it that that happens.
And I can agree with that. And, and I can also agree with that perhaps the email distribution should be updated, and I, I don't know, you know, to include police-fire, three board of selectmen, and of course, the town administrator. Now, let me ask you, Mike, my understanding is as you're going through your reporting and your reporting enhancements, you're going to be updating, you know, and researching greater than 10 minutes and all of that, and you might be including weather, and can you give us an update on that?
Yeah, so, for the last quarter, we've been looking at the data, and we've been updating the data, and we've implemented processes to do a data verification process on our overnight shifts, and that data, that data verification process utilizes GPS tracking on the vehicles, so it becomes a completely active system and takes out any error in terms of that data. And as we instituted this new system since 1-1 of January, what we have seen is those response times going over 10 minutes has precipitously fallen because primarily there have been data entry errors and concerns. So, year-to-date so far, we have one time that's an excessive 10 minutes out of all the calls that have been done in the first, you know, 45 days of the new year. That one extended response time is a result of a truck responding from a hospital in Springfield back into the coverage area to pick up the next call as well. So, at this point in time, we have not factored in weather. We expect within the next 15 days, we're going to have the ability to factor in poor weather days on top of that as well and report that as well too. So, we're pretty pleased with the system in terms of the data side of it. We've done a lot of work behind the scenes to get that, to get to this point, and the data's looking much more aligned. So, data from 22 that shows excessive response times and most likely data entry issues, weather issues, and/or responding back into the town from going out to Wobraham or other outlying towns that we might have been canceled for, or coming back into the town from a Springfield hospital in the area. So, the improvements on the data side and the system side are starting to show through with the work that we've been doing on Q3, Q4, about 22 on this.
Okay, thanks.
This whole changeover from AMR to Action was motivated by response times that we were seeing that Chief Farnsworth brought to me and to the selectmen, 20 and 30 minutes and, and more. And so, the essence of what we care about most is response time. Contract says 90% of responses should be eight minutes or less. We have, we have the information that responses average five minutes and what, 20 seconds? So, tightening up on the 10-minute, 10-minute response.
I want to add context to that, Bob.
What's that?
I want to add context to that. It was added by John Flynn at one of the selectmen's meetings. And those half-hour response times, those, they were totally unacceptable, where after East Long Meadow-
Yes.
-started doing their own ambulance service. Prior to that, AMR had no cost to town, stationed ambulance close to the Haddon border between East Long Meadow and Haddon line, and the response times were, were good, not as good as we're seeing now with, with the new service, but they were good. So, let's not use that half-hour response time as the basis for our conversation because that was an anomaly in a, in a year timeframe where, you know, where we had a situation where AMR was no longer, in East Long Meadow, they weren't able to provide us that for free.
I disagree with that. I think that it was the change in East Long Meadow that had the downstream problem for Haddon.
It was that change that precipitated a result which caused us to go out to bid for a new ambulance, and those times were-
I'm not dismissing that. I'm just saying, don't use that as the basis for this whole conversation on response time, because prior to that, response times were better than that.
Well, it's-
And if we're going to talk response times, we should talk response times from time of call until the ambulance arrives on site and not subtract the shoot time.
Well, that's later in our conversation, so if you put that off.
Yeah, that number that's coming out. Well, listen, there's a lot of public misinformation out there that, as we are, upset, okay? And there was not a 40% improvement in ALS versus DLS in the month of January. That's public information that was put out in a, in a, in the newspaper. There, our response time is not five and a half minutes, it's closer to seven and a half minutes if you count the way the response time is, should be recorded, which is from the time they get the call until the time they arrive on site. Right now, the response times that we see in those columns are the time they leave the site or leave, you know, get in the ambulance and go until they respond. So, let's have truthful discussions.
Mike, what's your thought on that?
So, I doubt it's showing that we're assigning the side of, our, our problem is, is that we aren't always notified of the call until it comes from a rec. Right? And the rec is handling the call. So, whatever system we have and whatever's going on from that side of it, that's not within our control. Okay? So, we're moving the truck as soon as we're notified of the call that's coming in to us from the block.
No, no, you, you start the out-of-shoot process as soon as you get the call, and then when that out-of-shoot process is complete, you know, they're, they're eating lunch or something, they gotta, you know, they gotta stand up, whatever, they gotta do something to get into the ambulance. My understanding is that when they get in the ambulance and they leave and they start driving to the, the site that the car, you know, the, to the response site, that's when the timer is ticking on that response time.
No, I doubt it starts when it's assigned to the truck, when the call is assigned to the truck, is when it starts ticking.
Okay.
So, the out-of-shoot time, if it's elongated, is going to show an elongated response time, and that data has been showing itself.
So, what's the start of that out-of-shoot time?
When the truck, when the truck has assigned the call.
Okay. But that, that second call there, and I don't have one of those in front of me, but that second call, the response time is from the end of the out-of-shoot until-
I checked prior to coming in with my data guy, and he said it's the time that the truck is assigned, so the time the truck goes on scene. Okay, the calculation was being made. I confirmed that with him today.
All right, I would have to go back through, I've got some on my computer, I have to go back through and look at it, but I'll, for a second discussion, I'll take your, your word on that.
Okay. So, and just to go back and wrap up about how we ended up getting into a bid situation looking for an ambulance. The actions by East Long Meadow precipitated really bad response times, which caused us to go out looking for our own ambulance. An AMR back in January 2020, 900,000. DLS was 500,000. Action was 330.
So, we're looking at history.
Right.
Now, let's, let's look at moving forward.
Well, I'm, I'm just trying to go back to what you were talking about, to level set where we were then and how we got to where we are today. And so, I think we're finished this discussion.
And I'm asking, I'm just saying we need to look at the whole picture, and the whole picture should look back beyond the point where we had, where AMR was no longer providing service in East Long Meadow.
I don't know that it makes sense because AMR and East Long Meadow, whatever happened before that resulted in us with these response times.
That's true.
This moment of time, this moment of time was the reason we ended up looking for our own ambulance. What happened prior to this is of no consequence.
You're mixing, you're mixing timeframes conveniently to bolster your, your position.
I don't think so.
For example, you're talking, you're talking about, you gave, you gave Robin free rein to-
No, all I'm saying is don't tell me I'm mixing timeframes, like, just explain what it is you're trying to say. Here's a document.
I'm trying to explain it. You're talking about, you say we can't look back in history. Well, those quotes that you got there were three years ago. We have no idea what quotes will be from ambulance companies right now.
This is my response to you talking about East Long Meadow and AMR.
Okay, then, then money shouldn't have been in that response at all. We were talking about response times, we weren't talking about money in quotes. So, you're, you're mixing things to conveniently show your point of view.
I don't think so.
If we're talking about response times, we need to say that historically, the response times were acceptable to the town, to the board of selectmen, to the, to the, and to the response team, the, the policeman, fire chief, prior to Action Ambulance, or, excuse me, AMR discontinuing their service with East Long Meadow. And then, then that precipitated this. I agree with you entirely.
Yeah.
But I'm just saying that the whole story needs to be up there.
It was the dismal response times that precipitated the whole, like, seeking bids and ending up where we are with Action. So, I think you and I are saying the same thing.
Okay.
All right. So, do we move on now? The only other change that, why we're on Section 6 response time, that if there is to be an amendment, I would suggest is that all times will be tracked by the Haddon Police Department Communication Center. Wobraham is now dispatch, and so-
Yeah, WRCC.
That should be an update. All right. So, we're ready to move on to currently listed staffing minimums are one paramedic and one EMT. Is that where we are? Currently listed staffing minimums are one paramedic, one EMT for all shifts. In an effort to provide more transparency, notifications must be sent to the designated BOS whenever service levels drop from ALS to BLS with explanation of why within 24 hours of service level change. Any service level below ALS for 24 cumulative hours in a one-week period of time on every Sunday is subject to a $500 per incident fine based on review by the designated BOS in the contract. Mike, is there a way to add to the reporting so that we do have transparency into when we have a drop in service and for what period of time?
Yes. It'd be a separate report though. So, so we're getting so many reports here, these are now going to be all different reports, is what we're going to have to generate.
But it's something that we can do on a daily, weekly, or you want to just get back to us on what would work?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, as far as the LGs and money, that is, I don't think that's our purview. We'll say that, you know, any, any additional cost going into the contract might change our pricing from Action. Does anybody have anything to add?
I do.
Good.
No, no, I do have something to add.
Oh, I thought you said I didn't.
I agree with the first sentence, that we need to have a active reporting when this happens. Needs to go to the board of selectmen. I think for 24 hours is a reasonable timeframe. I would say, I would, but I would say within one business day, rather than 24, 24 hours. But it, because, you know, if it's going to board of selectmen, they're, they're not being, I just think a business day would be a more reasonable one. The second part about finding when there is a, when a threshold of non-contracted services is reached, I am not in agreement with that. I think that by throwing this out there and saying that there's, if there's 24-hour level service, service change within one week period is setting a minimum threshold that's acceptable. The contract language currently says 24/7 ALS. I've heard various discussion points on this, for, well, you know, even if a DLS responds, you'll, you'll get transported to the hospital. Well, if a DLS responds to an ALS needed call, you may be transporting, transporting a corpse to the hospital, not the patient. And I think that the board of selectmen has been extremely remiss. It's been almost six months that we've been getting DLS service, and this is within our purview because our purview is quality, okay? That we've been getting DLS service almost on a weekly basis for one or two shifts. That we've been getting BLS service almost on a weekly basis for one or two shifts. And the Board of Selectmen is remiss in not bringing this, not having it at a meeting, not asking Action Ambulance to come in to a Board of Selectmen meeting, explain it, give them an action plan for fixing it, and living up to the contract. There is a, already a element in the contract, 31, I can't remember what the title is, yeah. The 31, which is the recourse and...
Breach and remedy.
The breach and remedy. There's already a breach and remedy there. Right now, BLS isn't reaching the contract, and I think the Board of Selectmen is remiss in not addressing that. Let's look at a theoretical situation. Let's say Action responds with a BLS, and a very unfortunate situation happens, and that patient dies in a loop because there's not an ALS services available in that action, in that ambulance. Hamden, I believe, is liable at that point in time because we have a contract that we're not enforcing for 24/7 BLS. And your average ambulance chaser lawyer would have a fun time with that to say, hey, look, Hamden wasn't even enforcing that level of the contract, you've got to respond, your relative was responding to a BLS service, required an ALS response. I just have trouble with accepting anything other than what's in the contract. And I don't have an issue with the fact that there's been challenges in the industry and, and, you know, that some things happened back in September that caused the problem. That was back in September. That problem hasn't been resolved. I'm not willing to give that flexibility, so I personally don't want that second sentence in here.
Mike, have you anything to add?
The only thing that I'll say is typically, any ambulance contract, when there are penalty clauses in contracts, when you go from small systems to large, large systems, providers factor penalty into the class of the system. So we can definitely have the conversation and then talk about pricing as well.
And I'd also like to add that if you look at Section 18, you know, what's going on nationally and statewide, there's plenty of documentation that, you know, you could use to substantiate force majeure, state of emergency, or whatever. And this enables the contractor, if the contractor incurs costs per, with protective measures, additional staffing, equipment, training, and management that extend over and above beyond, beyond the cost of normal operation of this agreement. With that in mind, the contractor respectfully requests that the town reasonably cooperate with the contractor. In every effort the contractor undertakes, recover unforeseen costs. And this pandemic and national paramedic shortage is certainly an unforeseen event. And I think there's plenty of documentation out in the world, including at the Mass Municipal Association, to substantiate that. So, all I'm saying is, in response to what you're saying, there's a flip side where our contractor could come back at us looking for resources.
I don't believe that. I believe what you're saying. It may be enforced in other situations, I don't think it's relevant in this situation. There's a contract to provide services, and it's not being provided. And if you say that this was something that they need more money in order to do that, then that flies in the face of the 3% increase that we were offered for the next two potential extensions.
What I'm saying is, if you're trying to assess damages one way, there's a flip side possibility of that, given the national P M T, E M T, I guess for W E T, E M T P shortage, and where salaries are increasing to onboard people, that their costs have gone up, and it is possible that, you know, there is a flip, and it might be an increase in our pricing.
I hear what you're saying, but apparently it's not because they're offering us an increase of 3%, an extension of 3%. If they said, came back to the town and said, you know, "We can hire those individuals that we need in order to fly 24/7 ALS, but in order to do so, we need a different value." I think that's a reasonable discussion for them to have with Board of Selectmen. Okay? But I don't think it's reasonable to, it's, to create a threshold of, this is the amount of time every week that BLS is acceptable. And that's what, that's what the second sentence does.
Can I go back to your example? So I think it would be pretty, that patient, even if ALS responded first, could very well die as well. And it would be a pretty hard-pressed in court to prove something like that. And I, if there is a, a BLS response, I mean, do you have, how long before an ALS is on site? Isn't it that Mutual Aid would roll an ALS?
That's what I was...
So, yeah. So it would be response.
If Mutual Aid ALS is available. But if there's a BLS ambulance at the staging point in Hamden, a minute away, there's a, there's a situation where, you know, they could have responded in a minute or two, but somebody has to come from East Long Meadow, and it's an imminent response and the person dies because there was no ALS in Hamden when it, when, not, not under the circumstance where they were called out by Mutual Aid, et cetera, another call, I understand that. But that's a situation where the Selectmen, and I believe they're remiss in this, have not had Action Ambulance in to read the Riad Act and say, "Listen, you're not meeting the obligations of your contract." And your whole thing about numbers, I understand, it makes sense logically, but then, if you're going to apply logic, apply logic to the whole equation. Because if they, why would they come back to the town and say, "We can give you an extension for 3%?" When you're saying, well, they can't, they can't do it at 3%, they can't do it with the money they're getting.
I never said they couldn't do it. All I'm saying is, if you open up the door to go one way, you open it up equally to go the other way.
You're saying if we hold them responsible, and we ask for, and we've talked about the Board of Selectmen, they have no authority there. I'll make that clear throughout my conversation. We recommended to the Board of Selectmen that they should be enforcing the contract. And the provider comes back with what you're saying is the potential of, well, we can't afford that because of what's going on. That flies in the face of what they just offered to the town.
What I'm saying is, if you're going to add costs, right?
No, we're not adding costs, we're saying...
You're adding, if you're adding damages, you're adding costs. It's just the nature of contracting, pure and simple.
They're subtracting value. You're not, you're looking at a one, you're looking at a one-sided coin.
Jim, a very good reason why ALS might not be available is because they're obligated to respond if another town calls. Yet, there's a lot of things...
That's in the contract.
That is, there's a lot of things that are...
I'm talking about, I'm talking about when they staged BLS personnel where, and equipment, where they should be staging ALS. And, and there's been at least two occurrences per week for the last six months. Okay? On average, I understand that there are fluctuations, and it didn't get better by 40% in January.
Mike, are you fully staffed ALS now with the new hires?
They're coming onboard, so they're actually doing all the orientation time. We've got nine people that are upgrading or coming on.
So when will you be fully staffed?
So it's going to be within the next week or so. That's our policy.
So I say that not to change anything and to give action since they have made such an effort to get fully staffed due to uncontrolled situation that was not that way at the beginning of the contract. They were 24/7 ALS earlier than we first started. And through COVID and the takeover at Holyoke, all those are beyond control of their control, and they've made every effort to provide us absolutely great service. They just hired more people. They recruited more paramedics.
This is six months after...
You're in a national shortage of paramedics.
Our job is not to, our job, our job is to, our job is to look at quality, and the fundamental element of quality is the fulfillment of the contractual obligation.
And the job is also to look at the whys of the impact.
No, it's not.
Yes, it is. It's all part of contract management. We had no impact, we had no person have, have, have any negative outcomes for our... But, but, but it is because they have been able to maintain quality service their entire, their entire time. Have you been to the hospital? The system is working. Have you been?
Yes.
Yeah, well, it's, it's a rags. Everybody's short, like, I mean, I just, I don't know how you're so stuck on this one, on this one thing when it's going to be over in the next month and they'll...
Because we were told it was going to be over in November, and it's not over yet, and it's February, almost March. That's why.
And we've been through crisis. They went through a huge crisis.
Our job is not to defend non-compliance with the contract. Our job is to look at quality, and compliance with the contract is a fundamental piece of the quality, and, and it's not there.
It will be there in a couple weeks. I would just say that the larger, well, thank you, because the larger system, you know, if we're talking patient care, at the end of the day, that's what matters. People live or die by the quality that is being provided. And the service that in the system is working.
So don't, so don't use, don't use words and concepts in one direction and not in the other direction.
I can agree, and Mike has agreed, to provide us reporting when BLS is in play versus ALS. Then I think it's reasonable to look to see the whys of that and to go forward from there. You know, how fast did they remedy? What was the cause? How fast did they remedy? And then the board can take steps from there. We start with the report.
That's what I said. I said, I believe that the report should be made. I thought one business day was acceptable instead of 24 hours, but I'll go with 24 hours if they agree.
24 hours in a week is what we have, is the suggestion.
No, no, 24-hour report threshold. You said, didn't it say the Board of Selectmen to report within 24 hours?
Well, I think you're...
To an explanation to come to the Board of Selectmen within 24 hours of the service change. That's what's in the language.
So, Mike, is that what you can deliver?
Well, you know, you have to look at business days, this is because of weekends and stuff So how do you want to handle weekend days as part of this, even as business days? To me, business day is, you know, Monday through Friday, excluding holidays.
Which is fine.
Yeah.
You know, so 24 hours within that business day.
So, so within one business day.
So if the business day ends at midnight, the report should be received before midnight the next day.
So the way we run it is it ends in that morning. So at 7:00 a.m. or 8:00 a.m., depends on the truck, there's a shift change. That's when a change takes place. So what we're saying is, the next business day of that event.
So if it happened on...
Because here's the thing, that event will end or terminate 12 or 24 hours after, so after that, 24 hours.
After the end of the shift.
Of the end of the shift. When the clock ticks.
Yeah.
And finish it, so it could actually be two minutes.
It could be.
Yeah, and that's the thing that we need to make sure that we're clear about. No, I don't think we need to. I don't think any, I think, you know, we, we might amend the contract to add the reporting and under standards and controls, to just add a new report.
I agree.
But, you know, I mean, that's, I think that's, that's fair for bringing that. If there is an amendment to the contract, that should be included. As far as LDs and all this other stuff, that's up to the board. Okay, are we ready to move on? Yes? Yes?
I just want to write this down. So we're, we're, we need to amend, we're not going on this, we're just having some verbal agreements. I'm comfortable with that as we just, the Selectmen can listen to this whole thing if they want.
Yeah, well, they're here.
So, you know, I agree that it's up to put amended language in the contract for reporting when it areas, so.
If we're going to amend the contract, add it. If, if there's a decision made that you're going to change the date and the time period, then, you know... I would caution them to contract it. If that's not our thing, that's up to the board. I know, I'm just saying, we already, we already gave them our decision, but we should open something up. Well, it can go the other way too. All right. So, amend this section to include the training of first responder EMT and add paramedic level certifications to Hamden Fire and Police Personnel at no cost to the town. I gave you guys a handout. Paramedic, and Mike, I hope you can address this because I can't. Paramedic total hour training is 10,072, as best as I can, 1,072 hours. As best as I can determine, the cost of paramedic program is somewhere between $17,000 and $20,000 per person. And if the, the churn of employees is what it seems to look like at the fire department or wherever, I think it's an expense that, first of all, is pretty expensive for the town, and I, I don't know how you feel about adding that, but I think it's a, it's a big ask.
Look, the other thing I'll say is that it's $17,000 to $20,000 for the education component alone. That, that's the tuition for the program. That doesn't include cost and travel time to clinical sites, hospital clinical sites, so ICU, ER, ID therapy, OR, also field internship and riding time with EMS providers to be a clinical time as well. So I don't know if the town is going to pay their staff to go do all that clinical time. We can also tell you that there's a 50% attrition rate for people that snap these programs to actually complete them as well. So you will have a 50% attrition rate, where you'll have a student enter the program, the tuition costs will be on, will be on, and they won't finish the program as well. So before the town wants us to agree to this, I understand that this is an extremely expensive endeavor. I can tell you, I have right here, this is how you, one of the, they brought tonight, $40,000. If you run an ALS truck, you need to buy two of them because you need a backup in case the front one goes down. So you need all of that training to understand how to run this device and everything it does. Hydroversion, defibrillation, pacemaker, end tidal CO2, and a number of other functions, and that's what the training is all about. So ultimately, the cost borne to do this and provide this training is significant, very significant. I'll also detail this back, the problem with the shortage of paramedics is because of the cost to do these types of programs. You can't manif, it takes 16 to 18 to 24 months to fulfill this program. It is not something that you do within six months, like a part-time EMT program, that is essentially 110 to 140 hours of training. Okay? This is enormous, and this is, and the town needs to discuss what they want to do from this training perspective if you want us to undertake this type of training. We will have our own paramedic program up and running within the next 30 to 60 days. That's what I spent my day today finalizing with the accreditation agency to help with the staffing shortage. However, our cost of doing it is that cost, to even train our staff to do it.
I would, I would agree that adding something that significant to the contract and not expecting to have cost increases would be unreasonable, and I would say it shouldn't be part of any extension.
You know, the other problem you have is that once you've trained paramedics, they're hard to keep.
Exactly. That's the churn I was...
I, I served in Norfolk, Mass. as the town manager, and they ran the ambulance service through the fire department. And the last time we did that, we trained three people. They graduated. One went to North Carolina, one went to a wealthy suburb of Boston, and we kept one. So we had to amend the contract to require...
That's not bad. That is, batting 330.
I know. Well, we had to amend the contract to say that if you leave before three years, you've got to pay back the cost of, of the training.
So I also want to know that the training option has been in the contract for almost three years now. Do we know how many personnel that...
Do we know how many personnel that, Mike, have you trained any hand-in police fire?
So...
Ed? Have you, has anybody availed themselves of the training that's currently available?
Want me to answer that, Mike?
Sure.
We have used CPR class. Wants to recertify our firefighters and some first responders. We had a few people take the EMP course, but I guess there's something that happened within action that the class, the instructor left. Again, I, I don't know the full story. But we had three people take that class. For some reason, it was instructor left and it turned to Zoom or something. And they finished it, but it was, it was a little bit of a, I'm sure it's ironed out now.
Yeah, so, Chief, I think probably five months ago, we met with you and Chief, Police Chief, about 20. Deputy was present as well. And we talked through all of this. And I asked the deputy to reach out to me about anybody that needed. PD specifically was fine. Chief said he was fine from a training perspective on his own. I'd asked your deputy to reach out to me about any additional training if he needed done, whether it was recertification training, initial training, first responder training, CPR training, or anything like that. And I have not heard back from him. I was at a meeting with him, I do, he spawned a meta with you as well. I reiterated that conversation with him. Please follow up and tell me about any training that he might want done. And I haven't heard back at this point.
Yeah, your EMP school, is it closed by now, or is it...
So we run the program remote, but we run it from, through the entire state. So we go as far as we can to feel to onsite stuff and stuff in Wilmington and everything in between. So we have all those options.
So at, at some point, there'll be some hands-on learning? Where, where would that take place?
We'd bring it onsite for you guys.
You would bring it onsite? Okay, 'cause I know that was a hardship the last time. They had to travel out east or something for, and get discouraged a few people. That's good to know.
Okay, anything more on that? I think we're good to move on.
On that, I'm...
Okay, standards and controls, we're back around to calculation of response time not being calculated by out of chute to arrival, but from time of dispatch to arrival time. For more transparency, response time is defined in Section 6, it's from receipt of the call until the ambulance arrives at scene. So, again, Mike, you said...
So we need clarification, receipt of what call? Is it the receipt of the call at the rec, or is it the receipt of the call at the action?
Well, how do you know when the rec receives a call if you don't receive one?
Well, I, I get that. So, so some systems want it from the initial call. Some systems, it would be from when we're notified, right?
So would that require coordination with Wilbraham?
Correct.
Is that a doable thing, or is it...
I don't know, I'd have to ask.
Then we'd have to maybe change the response time of the contract because,
Correct.
You know, there's no way that, they, they can't start going to a call, they don't even know about it, or they're not assigned to it.
So from, from a process perspective, I'm certified in the, which is your medical response stuff. There are times that the caller is prolonged on the phone before a resource is set. Because of resources, go through the protocol, it's more important to go through the protocol first. So, it's not always an accurate or a good representation of system response because other life-saving mechanisms being done on the phone first before resources are set. So, how we do this open Pandora's box about reporting?
May, may I make a suggestion?
Sure.
I, I know they're asking you to do a lot of reports. I, I'm sitting here, I need a report for this or a report for that. I get that. So how about if we just ask Central to provide the report for the times that way? Or, I mean, I think that's what we're getting at.
But how do they know when they arrive? Do they know when you arrive?
They know, they have to call on scene. The PD calls on scene, we call on scene, everybody knows when everybody arrives. So I think, I think what's happening to Jim's concern, and I, this is just a suggestion, you can do whatever you want. But I, I think what's happening is, when Action enters, they're assigned that ambulance to that call, would be possibly the only error that could be created in my, you know, what I'm saying. And it could be when the dispatcher's entered the screen as A1 going, going to the call. But that's, so if, if we got, when dispatch, you know, called in, Action to, to go to the call, then they would enter that time. Once Action says we're on scene, then they'll have that time. That would be the actual en route time, in my opinion. And I think that's what Jim was referring to. I don't know what that...
Yeah, I'm looking at, I'm looking at a, a report from Tim.
And I don't even know if Tony's on board with you.
My only concern is this, is what we have learned through this entire process is there's a number of human errors that take place in the data. And until you can find a way to verify that data being accurate, then the data is not good. As we, this exercise that we've gone through and working with the committee has been very valuable on that front.
So you're against, you're against...
I'm not against it. My, my issue is, how do you verify the times coming from the rec are human error-free?
I guess that's what I'm saying. I, I think it's gonna, I'm saying both ways. It could happen both ways. Where there, where I guess Action's assigned time to go to the emergency call, but rec is assigned, that's their job, is to keep track of those times on that call. I'm, I'm just saying, again, it's just a suggestion.
And all, what we're finding, and my only point is, And I'm not trying to say... Not all the data is accurate.
I'm sorry, I should, I should, I should retrace my steps. I'm not trying to say we use this against your contract. It's not, I'm just saying, if someone's concerned that the times are not accurate, this is a way for them to check, maybe? I, I'm not, I don't know, I'm just trying to facilitate it.
I think it's an interesting exercise. Because, because Tony has our GPS system. We've given him access to that. So he can track the truck. He can look at that. So he has the potential to do data verification as well. So collaborating with him on this, I'm open to doing that. I just wanna make sure that the data is being, is accurate to the point of success. And they're making mistakes not intentionally. It's because they have other things going on simultaneously and they have limited people to, to do those things, that's all. And I'm not faulting them far. I'm not even faulting my staff far. But what we've learned going down this journey is that these things happen and you have to spend time and effort to go back, retrace steps to verify data accuracies and inaccuracies. That's all.
It would be fairly accurate to track the time you get the call, like you're actually dispatched, the ambulance gets the call, not the time the rec gets the call and dispatches the ambulance.
Right.
So from the out-of-chute, as soon as you get the call and arrive on the scene, those are, have limited error, correct? Where you get the call.
Yes.
And then you're dispatched.
We have limited error because we're validating that data.
Yep, and then, so you're saying that the rec can get a call and, and they can be at times, like you say, giving life-saving...
Yeah, emergency medical dispatch, they're, they're trained. One of the reasons why we consolidated with Wilbraham. So we had one dispatcher at the console. Wilbraham has a team.
Yeah.
And so they can conduct emergency medical dispatch.
Yes.
Which is also a contributor to saving lives.
Yes.
And, uh, uh, that'll sometimes take a few minutes.
And that, they have a protocol that they have to follow.
They do, legally.
So, I think, in all due respect, that that, the way it is now is, is the most accurate and fair way to judge response time when eliminating that variable and just going from when the, the ambulance is actually told they have a call or dispatch and they get to the scene. That is a fair way, that is their response time. I mean, there's an extended, there are other situations that are beyond anybody's control and they, they don't, you know. That's my...
So can I ask a question? Because I'm peeking at Jim's laptop, your, Ed and Mike. The first column in the report after the address is dispatch time. Is there likely to be an inconsistency or human error factor or whatever in that dispatch time as compared to what Wilbraham would have?
It's possible for human error. It is. That's what we're finding out. So what we're doing is we're going back and we're listening to tape that's dating timestamp. We're looking at when the truck turns on. So when the truck turns on, the GPS system lights up. It goes from, you know, a gray out to a green. When this truck starts moving is then we know, we can calculate that out of chute time. That's how we're doing it. When the truck stops at the scene, we know that they've arrived. So we're supporting our system through technology, through the GPS system, to get more accurate and updating data.
So the dispatch time in this report is when you receive the call and the truck turns on?
When we receive the call.
With the call.
Right.
Any comments, questions?
No, I, I look back at a, a report and the, the reference in here to, to using the out-of-chute, the out-of-chute time, not, not, it's referencing the annual report, yearly report, not this monthly report. The monthly report, and Michael is correct in what he said earlier, it's, you know, I was looking one that 162142 was the dispatch en route, was 162247, which is, and he started using fraction, decimals instead of seconds.
The way the database...
It's a little over a minute, 1.08, which is, which is correct. And then it arrived at 1640, 163009, which would be just under nine minutes, which is 8.45. So you're correct that, that that, at least in this, I didn't look at the annual report that Craig is referencing, but yeah. You're, you're correct on that.
So are we saying this is a non-issue?
I, I don't know what is in the annual report. That's, that's what the yearly report. I'd have to see if I have that on my computer.
So in terms of report modifications for time of dispatch and all that, this is a non-issue, not a critical, right? Okay, so, moving on. Need more effort from the contractor to report on all calls over 10 minutes. The list of desigmes and VOS, 43 times in calendar year 22, the response to 10 minutes is rated was noted in the yearly report by Action. And just to note that 43 calls out of 673 is 6.38%. We don't know the details of that, Mike. Did you go back and look at those 43, or are you in the process of that to see?
The bulk of them are data error problems. And, and the problem that we have with our GPS system, it only tracks the data back so far, I think it's 60, 70 days. So we can't go back beyond that. To go back and verify with the GPS system, it doesn't allow, it doesn't store the data that long. So we can't go back and check those. But what we did do is in Q4 of 22, is we went through all these exercises to set up the system to now nail this down to understand the reason why the data variances were, were there. And now that we're here at date one, response time over 10 minutes, we think that it's more of a data error problem than a system function problem based upon what we're realizing. We've got one, one time in 40, 45 days. And we have a handle on it, where it was coming from, coming out of Springfield, coming back to town.
That one 10-minute response was coming from Springfield?
Coming from Springfield. After, after dropping the patient from the system off to the hospital, it was coming back into the system. And that's why I'm here.
So that's the system one?
Yeah, the data validation side of it is showing tremendous. So, so what, like I said, what we've learned here is I'm concerned about other people's data because I don't know what validation process that's on, that's working. But it being, because it's labor-intensive, it's very labor-intensive. Our overnight dispatches spend a couple of hours every night going through all this data, looking at the GPS grid, checking recordings on the phone system or radio transmissions at a date and timestamp to vet, to keep, they're essentially putting the pieces, the pieces of the puzzle together through that validation process and using those tools to do it.
So would you expect for 2023 into 2024 that at the end of the year, we have a much lower than 6.38% of calls greater than 10 minutes once the data is validated and all of that, to give it a, that one instance that was explainable in 45 days?
Yeah, the first 45 days shows the system's work.
Absolutely. I, I would suggest that this comment made by Selectman Rose was, needs more effort from the contractor to report on this.
Yeah, we gotta get that far.
Yeah.
So, regarding the reporting that should come daily, you know, in addition to the other report, can you ensure that within that 24-hour period, and let's just nail down our distribution, it would be our town administrator, the VOS, police chief, and fire chief be added, is there anybody else? To that distribution?
I get them. I distribute them around.
Do you distribute them? I thought you put them in a repository.
Oh, I do, I keep that too, but I mean...
So you're distributing them...
I mean, if there's anything that doesn't get to the selectmen, I make sure they get it, that way. I have a question though. Who decides whether the transport goes to Wing or whether it goes to, down to Bay State?
It's typically the patient.
Oh, the patient?
The patient.
And what's, what's the time difference between Wing and, and Bay State?
It depends where you are in town is a good point.
Oh, yeah.
So if you're on the other side, it's closer.
Right, yeah, okay.
Now, protocols, cardiac arrest, respiratory arrest, airway problems, they can't be managed. It's the closest hospital based upon geography. We're required to take the patient. But if it's a stable patient that can make the trip, it's typically where PCP or the specialist is in that particular system.
So Mike, you're committing to making sure things greater than 10 minutes are reported within the 24 hours, right?
Yes.
Because I have to say that Action's been a little bit missing that regard. Okay. No, if, do we need to update, do you have the email distribution? If we're just giving lifetime administrator, the three board selections, just to the fire chief? Or do you need us to send you the email address?
I have the fire chief, I have the police chief, I have Bob's. I don't know how you do the VOS email. Is it, is it an email group or is it individual?
I just have a distribution list.
Can we just email, make it simple and give it to Bob and he'll distribute it?
I, I do that. Actually, I now receive reports from you, at least it has your email address, so. That wasn't the case a couple of months ago.
No, what's happening is that's part of the review process, so I'm making sure the review process is being done. That's why it's coming later in the day. Before it was automated, we weren't able to get the verification done. It's coming later in the day, which we need the extra time to do that. Because it was almost coming out at 7:00 AM, so not everything was verified. So that's why I'm pushing them to now.
No, I, I'm, I'm not a reflection on you, it's the position. It's, it's, town administrator's not here 24/7, you know, whoever's in that position, Bob, for verification, does these things. If we're using that as the distribution channel, I think that's a weak point. I would prefer to see it go to all individuals.
Well, it takes the middleman out of the equation and then nobody can say they didn't get it.
Well, that's okay with me. I can tell you that I look at email every day of the week, including Saturdays and Sundays, multiple times. And I do it because if you don't, it, it accumulates and you have an overwhelming burden on Monday morning. So if I see something...
I push that email to you Friday night, Saturday night, Sunday night. As well.
Okay, so are we agreeing that the distribution is gonna include all these entities, one to three, six people?
I would agree.
I think so. Okay. We'll get you those email addresses, Mike.
Thanks.
Okay, response time, C-NOs.
Okay, so the distribution I was to VOS individuals?
Town administrator, VOS individual, police chief.
Fire chief, police chief, fire chief.
Okay, what did we have for section response time, C-section four amendments? I think we already did that.
Oh, no, I want to go back to, it needs more effort from the contractor to report on calls over 10 minutes. I, we just discussed what, what's going to, so I, I guess that addressed that issue. That, you know, that, that in the past, I apparently was not going out all the individuals and was... Did you get all of these reports? Are you, are you consistently getting reports when it's more than 10 minutes?
I guess, I, no, I don't, I don't get any of them. I just get quarterly reports.
Okay, so you have not been on the distribution list for any kind of ad hoc reports for, that's been more than 10 minutes?
I have not. I don't, I don't know if the police chief is getting them, or I have not, I've not received any.
Okay, so we...
We're just renting that.
Yeah, we're renting that. All right. All right, great, okay.
Okay. So, section six, response time, C above notes in section four, did we, I think we did all that already, but. Section four, this is where we talked about the changes. The fire chief should be changed to police chief, and Wilbraham, regional emergency communication center should replace hand-in dispatch. Personnel subsections DE and F are the same as in section one. Amendments, minimum personnel standards, and provide first responder empty, paramedic-level training for town hand and fire, police personnel eligible across the town. I think we beat that dead horse. Add amendment, that the contractor must notify the designee and BOS immediately upon disciplinary infraction, personnel suspension, termination, or any other unprofessional found by an action employee while on duty in the town hand-in. If you look at page one, C of the existing contract, during the term of this agreement, contractor shall operate an ambulance service licensed by the Office of Emergency Medical Services of the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, and shall provide advanced life support. The town shall be immediately notified of any suspension, revocation, or denial of licensure in any events or circumstance that prevent the ambulance service from providing the agreement, providing the agreed-upon ambulance services. So I think that comment is more covered. Agreed?
Agreed.
Agreed?
Yeah.
Perfect. Okay, that gets us to backup service, I think this is the last one. Add amendment that lists HFD as backup service to Action Ambulance, Monday through Friday, H4. At HFD, a secondary backup service, and we then can try to backup in off-hours and weekends. I think we've already discussed this at the outset, and it's not our purview, or it's not the purview of the ambulance committee before you spoke of this contract, so.
I'd just like to add something to that if I can, because there was, you know, Bob's opening comments were very, very passionate, I mean, I, I hear your passion, but I do have a different opinion, and I just want, this is going out to the public, so I want to know that, I share a different opinion, but this, I agree that this is not the venue for that discussion.
Okay, so, anybody have anything else to say, or do we have a motion to adjourn?
There were comments by Suckin' Down to Portland.
That's in the packet that I handed out.
Are any of these in the contract that we agreed on? I didn't get this from Tony.
I read it earlier, and I think a lot of it covers, or it's a piece of opinion regarding police chief and fire chief.
Yeah, I watched.
And so I think we offered our opinion on that, and I don't think there's anything more to say about it than that. But I do have a curiosity, but my guy's, his suitcase's over there, and I'm curious to know if it's in that.
Just so the committee knows. So this is actually the drug blocks of the paramedics' care. So the thousand-plus hours of training that we go through is really centered upon this cardiac monitor, the drug blocks. And these are what we call controlled substances, which are strictly regulated by food and drugs at the state level, at a level. And can only, and all of this can only be issued through pharmacies at the hospitals that we have agreements with. So, that's really the big difference. So, we have drugs here, I can open up your lungs, I can slow your heart rate down to nothing, I can speed it up really quickly, I can wake you up if you're unconscious and a diabetic. This is done intravenously, this could be done intra-ossus, where we can grow into the bone in people now, to do things, to gain access. So, this is all part of that overall training. Now, the problem with this is that this requires a whole level of additional oversight as a service. If I was to give this box to someone in this room to walk out the door with, that would be violating federal law. Because this is all regulated by the federal government.
And I was gonna ask you to take it home.
Not allowed. The only reason I have it is because it being in a physician that amendment, I'm allowed to essentially distribute these medications as a paramedic. But nobody else is allowed to even, you know, have the combination to the lock that goes on this box. So, everything needs to be logged, so you need oversight. Now, the challenge with all of this is, is by giving all these medications and all the things that happen, you need a very strict clinical oversight of continuous quality improvement program, or quality assurance program, to make sure what's going on on a day-in, day-out basis is appropriate and meeting the protocols. You also need physician oversight, so we have a physician that we pay, that's on staff for us, who's board-certified emergency room physician, that oversees all the clinical performance of our paramedics. And that physician interfaces with the physicians in the different emergency rooms that we're in, basically. We get our medical control and material out of base date. So Dr. Stanberry, we want to face the physicians at base date, or, and from an oversight perspective. And then we do reporting into those hospitals as well, just like we do reporting to you. We supply clinical reports to the hospitals to show what's going on with the system. So we have to have a very extensive behind-the-scenes network of people to support all regulatory oversight that goes along with all of this. So it's a complicated one altogether.
How, what's your competency program for your paramedics? Is it quarterly, three to six months, and you continue it?
So the challenge with paramedics, and part of the problem, we're dealing with the shortages, every two years, we need to resurface. And so we have to do online classes, in-person classes, we have to do monthly M&amp;M rounds of physicians to new cases, difficult cases, trends that we see within the, within the industry, within healthcare itself. Because as people know, healthcare revolves, what we did 10 years ago is not the same as we do today. So the medications that we carry change all the time, the protocols at the state level change every, every, every year. New protocols, the state just issued this, starting April 1st of this year. So now we're responsible for training all of our staff, those in protocols as well. So they have to come up to speed. We end up having to take drugs out of the drug box, and sometimes we put new drugs in. So it's a constant evolution of change.
I just take your box.
It's a lot of behind-the-scenes work, and it's a lot of-
I appreciate that.
We have some drug doses in here, but we have a dollar dose. You know, we got two to six doses of some of those drugs in there, so the box is very, very expensive.
What's the, where you put the price tag on that?
On the box itself.
On the box with its contents?
With the contents, well, yeah, the contents and everything, probably about $6,000 to $7,000. Yeah, we carry ketamine, you know, so ketamine is one of those powerful tranquilizers out there right now that we're using to facilitate these procedures. You know, that's a new medication for us that the, the, the physicians have granted us to practice. We practice under the license of the physician, and the emergency room is our duty. We are not allowed to just go out and practice on our own. So we have to have very, we have very complex medical control and oversight agreements with the hospitals. They delegate that already plus. We can't do this on our own. We do this under our affiliation agreements with the hospital. So those affiliation agreements are typically reviewed annually as well, based upon the data that we're recording. And then, if we have to do corrective action with our paramedics, then the physician in the hospital system oversees that as well.
Yeah.
Okay? So it's very, very, it's very highly regulated.
I can't appreciate that.
Yes, it's a lot, especially if you're working in healthcare. So we're regulated by DPH, we're regulated by mass food, and then at times, and they are regulated by the FDA. But also, food and drug regulates the pharmacies in the hospitals, and mass food and drug. So they're required to do these exchanges with us and provide us stuff. But we have to report back to the pharmacy. Ultimately, we report into pharmacy on that side of medications.
Don, Dan? Our other selectman, he's not in the pharmacy, yeah? He used to do, he was on a committee about investigating, and was telling me, you know, incidences and-
Of the variants.
Something else, yeah. I don't think they call it, but.
Yeah.
I have a question, and it's really not-
This also plops down to all this too. So these are mostly all ID push meds, ID GIP meds, and all the calculations are done by the paramedic. The problem right now that you're seeing is, paramedics that have the high attrition rate of missing out on the math skills to do the math for medications. That's why the attrition rate is so high, which is contributing to the shortage of paramedics. Because they don't have the fundamental math skills to get through the medication now. That's where the problem, that's why, that's part of the problem that we're in, attracting more people. Because the fundamental skill sets, they can't get to that, which is probably why.
And it seems like the school are not doing a good job of fundamental math skills.
Do you see like a database, or some like inhaler device that at some point will let you input, you know, like height, age, gender, whatever, to do the math for you, to get over there?
They're there, but they're not, they don't have time to get that, like, with some of these calls, to do some of the math.
Oh, they're gonna go right there and do the math.
It's quick, I have to like the app.
It's quick.
Yeah.
Very quick.
So I have an off-the-wall question, on the news tonight, they were talking about fentanyl coming into our area, with that force tranquilizer called-
Yeah, so many different versions of that.
So when you talked about new protocols and everything, would that be something that, like, if, say for example, that drug is coming into our area, that you guys would have to, like, immediately respond? I mean, I don't know what the remedy would be, if it's Narcan or whatever, but is that something that you have to, like, get immediate training to address?
Yeah, so there was one point in time, a number of years ago, that people were overdosing on a combination of fentanyl and cocaine. And what would happen is we would wake them up with Narcan, and they would be so combative that we couldn't control them because of the stimulant on the cocaine side. And there were other substances that were mixed in with that. So before we would wake them with the Narcan, and we'd control the airway, we'd do some different things to do that, make sure that their saturations were appropriate, they were breathing okay, we would actually give them a tranquilizer. And then we would wake them up with the Narcan to protect the first responders. So, there's a lot of different factors that go into this.
I really appreciate you bringing this to our attention, because it's, it's not only fascinating, but you can see the complexity of managing something like that.
Yeah, we can do, we're close to the end of surgical airways.
Wow.
You know, surgical pyroldotomy, we're doing needle crack right now, we're in the process of training after people through surgical airways. We can do chest decompression for thorax, which contains, there's a lot of stuff that that's, again, the training is so complex to get to that. It takes so long to train one person to get there.
Yeah, that sort of elucidates this 1,072 hours that we talked about earlier.
And that's the bare minimum, some programs will go longer than that, yeah.
Should I, you want to close the meeting?
Is there a motion to end the meeting?
Totally.
Second. All right, we're done.